Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not to temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever and ever. Amen. Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item C on the agenda is introduction of our new CIC director.
So April, stand up and come here to the microphone if you will please, Forest Ma'am. Everybody, this is our new CIC director.
Hello.
Her name is April. Be nice. You have some quick, just quick background of yourself, please, April.
Well, I just came from Blissfield, Michigan, where we are currently still living, but we're looking to relocate to the area. I've been in economic development for about six years, most recently for the village of Blissfield, and then before that, I did work with Ohio Means Jobs in Lucas County and workforce development there. So I'm just excited to be part of this really welcoming and friendly community. Everyone has been great, and the more and more I tell people in Blissfield that I'm now working in Napoleon and in Henry County, they, I've discovered that some of them used to live in Napoleon, and they always have great things to say, so I'm super happy. I feel like I made a great decision, and so I'm really excited to be here and to keep things moving forward, and I'm looking forward to being partners with all of you and, you know, just continuing to grow the county.
Yep. Obviously workforce development's a big thing for us now, and you know, you're gonna work with a lot of people for that, but we appreciate you stopping by.
Yeah.
Did anybody have any questions for April?
Do not. We don't want to put you on the spot right off the beginning. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Look forward to working with you.
If you see April out and about, she's, she's like, a lot of us would be, first getting here, realizing everybody's related to somebody, everybody knows everybody. So introduce her to people that you're with, and she'll bring some names to the faces, and introduce yourself more than once, so that she knows who you are. But thank you very much for coming.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Item, item D, approval of minutes from May 20th, 2019, regular council meeting minutes. In the absence of any objections or corrections, the minutes shall stand approved. They are approved. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address council? Seeing none, we will move on. Reports from council committees. Finance and Budget Committee met on May 28th, 2019, and discussed and tabled the East and West Graceway Drive Street improvements project for this year. Safety and Human Resource Committee meeting on May 28th was canceled due to lack of agenda items, as was the Technology and Communication Committee. Moving on to item H1, introductions of new ordinances and resolutions. Resolution number 038-19, a resolution adopting the 2020 tax budget for the city of Napoleon, Ohio, as required in sections 5705.28 and 5705.281 of the Ohio Revised Code, and directing the Finance Director to file the same with the county auditor and declaring an emergency. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second. Kent, again.
Again, it's, it's pretty much same for us from year to year, with the exception of the change in valuations. We currently stand at 2.9 mils of inside millage, and is what I need to file for the estimate on the tax budget with the, with the county auditor. Certification.
Thank you. Have any comments or questions?
What's our deadline? What's our deadline?
July 16th is the deadline.
All right. Yeah, we can do three reads. Yep. Good enough.
Okay, Rox, please call the roll.
Jesse?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jeff, Al?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Okay. We'll be moving on to the second read next meeting. Item I, second reads of ordinances and resolutions. Resolution number 032-19, a resolution awarding the East and West Graceway Drive Street improvement project and declaring an emergency. This needs to be, this needs to be untabled from?
Yep. So you need a motion to untable it.
Motion to untable. Second.
Rox, please call the roll to untable.
Jesse?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jeff, Al?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Council President, members of council. At the Finance and Budget Committee last week, Tuesday, we discussed the capital fund balance and some of the capital fund history, and Kent has, as new Finance Director, has had a chance to do an analysis of our current financial situation for the city. When we, and this, and just to give a little bit of background, when we went through, and obviously, you were all there and approved the budget, but when we discussed the budget, there was, the annual resurfacing projects, as a part of the annual resurfacing projects, we were going to include Graceway in that. However, Chad and I had a discussion about carving that out as a standalone project because of the amount of concrete work that was needed, and it was just a better fit to have it as a standalone project rather than a typical resurfacing project. As a result, we went, carved that piece out, we bid the annual resurfacing projects in Graceway separately. In doing that, we had to have legislation to move forward with this project separately, which gave us just enough time for Kent to do the analysis and take a look at our financial situation. And in doing that, Kent, I don't know if you want to give a recap of the, of the things that you handed out
Right.
Last week.
This, this page here, this first page, it basically shows a little bit of a history of, of our starting balance in the capital improvement fund, kind of where we've, where we've been. Typically, I would say the target area that we'd want to be at is about that 800,000 mark as a starting balance. You know, that's a, that's a pretty good number there, and a pretty healthy number. You can see as we, the outliers there, the 2016 and 17, and early 17 and 18, the beginning of the year, is kind of overstated as the beginning balance from the standpoint that we received, I believe, what, what project was that?
Oh, Industrial Drive, I think we had somehow budgeted in an atypical amount of money higher than what we normally had because of the influx of grant funds that came in as a result of that.
So those, those are a couple outlier, so to speak, but, but you can see that in 2019, we started with about 966,000, and we're looking, as it stands right now, if everything comes in, as budget plays out, and as anticipated, we would have an end of the year balance of about $132,000 in there.
Now, we did, that includes the Graceway project, and just as, as a caveat to that, we did, we were able to include about $30,000 worth of utility funds to go towards the project. So it's, it's actually a 162 number.
And it, and it leaves, it leaves that margin there, in my opinion, a little bit too close for comfort to, to proceed at this point. You know, I do think that if we would not do that project, then, then we give ourselves a little bit more of a, a little bit of a cushion going into next year and revisit those items as we look at next year's budget at this point. But, you know, we, we looked at a number of different areas that we could do some trimming, but it was, it was solely that. It was trimming for the sake of trying to, to increase that number a little bit, and it was still, the margin was just not, not where I feel comfortable.
Hence the reason why the project was by the, voted by the committee to table this project for this year and revisit it next year. Also, the timing, not that it's gonna make that big of a difference, maybe it will, maybe it won't, it's a, it's a, but we bid this in March, I believe, or late March was when it was advertised. So if we rebid this again, we may actually get other firms to come in and take a look at the project earlier in the season. By March timeframe this year, it just seemed like, and I think Councilman Commodore made a comment that there were a lot of companies that schedules were filling up
Sure.
Early on, so hopefully we can get a, you know, still have competitive bids that come in if we rebid this next year. I don't know if there's anything else you want to cover in this.
I guess. So if the numbers look good next spring, you could possibly move this up to the top of the list next year, is that what you're saying? Okay.
I appreciate, Kent, in your new position, I mean, that's, that's why you were chosen for this, and I'm sure that wasn't an easy thing for you to look at and, and say, hey, let's, let's cross this one off the list. I'm sure that's, that wasn't your goal. I appreciate you taking the time to look into it and looking out for the city's financial well-being and bringing that to our attention. Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Jesse?
We've got to make a motion for it.
I'm sorry.
I'll make that motion table until.
Table removed. One removed.
There's two, there's two things, you can either remove it from the agenda or vote, vote this down. And then, and then, I have it under here, so you can do it right now also, or you can wait till Discussion Action under K1 to reject all bids. So the first thing is either you can vote it down or remove it from the agenda. I think that the, we talked about this with Tammy, and the cleanest way would be to vote it down. That way, if the, if this legislation comes back up again, we're not bringing this legislation back, we just bring in new legislation, so you can vote this piece of legislation down, and then in K1, reject all bids for this, and then we'll revisit it in, in the next year's budget.
And that's, kind of where I was going with that, is having us vote on this if we want this or not.
Gotcha. Yes.
And then, and do three reads like we normally would, to give the community time to voice their opinion on, on this and ask questions.
Okay.
That's the way I was, unless somebody wants to make a motion to do it a different way.
If we vote it down, it will be gone, then.
Yes.
Oh, right, yeah, so there's not three reads if we vote it down.
It'll come up. Straight down, yeah. So sorry, you can call the roll. I just wanted to make sure that.
Just wanted to make sure somebody didn't have a motion that, you know, one of the other options before I proceed.
Yep.
Okay. Rox, please call the roll.
Jesse?
Yes.
Dan?
So, just to be clear, if you vote yes, you're voting that you want us to go to certain continued projects, and if you vote no?
No, all right. I understand, no. Change the vote.
It's my turn.
Dan?
No.
Joe?
No.
Travis?
Always happy to vote no.
Jeff, Al?
No.
Ken?
No.
Lauren?
No.
So that has not passed. Hey, moving on to item I2, ordinance number 034-19, an ordinance amending section 143.01 of the City of Napoleon's codified ordinances, composition, and control of the city fire rescue department, and repealing ordinance number 012-11. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Joel?
Thank you, Council President. Pardon me, I'm gonna get the legislation up on the screen first. Okay. This modifies the codified ordinances to, it changes the, the not to exceed number of staff for the fire department from 50 to 70, and it's to accommodate the addition of the part-time fire instructors for the fire training facility, and there's a companion piece of legislation that, that follows this up as well. So nothing's changed from last week, or, I'm sorry, two, two weeks ago.
Is there a desire for suspension? On timeframe?
I'm, if you would like to do suspension, that'd be greatly appreciated. I'd like to move suspension.
Hey Rox, please call the roll on suspension.
Jesse?
Yes.
Dan?
No.
Joe?
No.
Travis?
Yes.
Jeff, Al?
No.
Ken?
No.
Lauren?
No.
Government does not move fast.
He's such a much vote no.
We have any other questions or comments?
Rox, please call the roll.
Jesse?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Jeff, Al?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
We have any other questions or comments? Rox, please call the roll.
Jesse?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Jeff, Al?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Item I4, resolution number 035-19, an ordinance creating the non-bargaining position of adjunct EMS instructor and adjunct fire instructor for the fire department of the city of Napoleon, Ohio, and amending ordinance number 075-18 and declaring an emergency. Joel?
Thank, oh, we need a motion.
So moved. Motion. Second.
Thanks. Thank you, Council President. Yeah, so this is the ordinance creating the adjunct EMS instructor and adjunct fire instructor positions, and here is the exhibit, I believe it's Exhibit C, let me scroll down to it, adds the positions with the pay rates on the bottom here. Now, the pay rates are covered under the fees that are charged for the, for the use of the facility from any entity that wants to use the, when they wants to use it. Chief, do you have anything to add?
No.
Okay.
Okay, have any other questions or comments? Hey Rox, please call the roll.
Jesse?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Jeff, Al?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Item I4, resolution number 036-19, a resolution authorizing the city of Napoleon to execute a loan agreement with the Henry County Commissioners for the funds to purchase the city share of the countywide communication system and declaring an emergency. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Joel?
Thank you, Council President. This legislation authorizes this to, the city to execute this loan agreement. It is for $60,554.68, and is for a zero interest loan for 10 years from the Henry County Commissioners for the, for the radios, for the new radio system. So, big thanks to the, to the Commissioners for providing this, it was a good, very thoughtful on their end.
I agree. Any other questions or comments? Hey Rox, please call the roll.
Jesse?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Jeff, Al?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Okay, we have no third reads today, so we'll move on to the goodness city. K1 is Discussion Action, East and West Graceway Street Improvement Project.
As a follow-up to the legislation being voted down, council would need a motion to approve for the rejection of all bids.
So moved.
Second.
Rox, please call the roll.
Jesse?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Jeff, Al?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Okay, we'll be moving on to the second read next meeting. Item I, second reads of ordinances and resolutions. Resolution number 032-19, a resolution awarding the East and West Graceway Drive Street improvement project and declaring an emergency. This needs to be, this needs to be untabled from?
Yep. So you need a motion to untable it.
Motion to untable. Second.
Rox, please call the roll.
Jesse?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Jeff, Al?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Okay, we have no third reads today, so we'll move on to the goodness city. K1 is Discussion Action, East and West Graceway Street Improvement Project.
As a follow-up to the legislation being voted down, council would need a motion to approve for the rejection of all bids.
So moved.
Second.
Rox, please call the roll.
Jesse?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Jeff, Al?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
That has passed. Never been approved.
I wondered where you were going.
It's on the other side. I didn't see anything go over.
I'm gonna skip down to K7.
Going back to the softball game.
All right, K3, Discussion Action, Award of Agreement for Professional Design Services to Jones and Henry Engineers LTD for the Water Waste Treatment Plant Phase 1 Improvements Project.
Yes, council, we advertised for this project, we utilized quality-based selection for this, we received qualification statements from three engineering firms, Jones and Henry Engineers, Stan Tech Consulting Services, and Arcadis. We reviewed their submittals, we interviewed each of the firms with five people on the committee, we unanimously selected Jones and Henry Engineers out of Toledo, Ohio. I worked with them to work on a contract to get the scope of services we were looking for with a price that was within our budget. We were dividing the project essentially into three phases, which is even more confusing since the project's called Phase 1. But for the first two phases, the contract is, has a fee of $469,100. If approved tonight, that is what the initial portion of this contract would be. We will have a codicil in the contract for an additional approximation of $400,000 to do Phase 3, which would include engineering during construction. The reason is, we're looking at some possible alternative contract forms, one of which might be a C Mar, Construction Manager at Risk, or something else along those lines. So the engineering firm was willing to give us an estimated cost for the remainder of the project, once we got to that point. I can't award the rest of that project at that cost without council approval, so that would come back to council. It's just an amendment to the contract, it's as a placeholder. So what you'd be approving tonight would be design of the project up to 60% of the full design, and it would be at a cost, or a not to exceed cost of the $469,100.
I have to, if you don't mind chiming in, there's a few more things worth pointing out. The review team
Yes.
Was.
It was.
Me, you, Brad.
It was city manager, myself, the wastewater superintendent, Dave Pike, his chief operator, Jeremy Oakley, one, two, three, four, five, yes, all five. Brad Meyer, our construction engineer.
And, and a lot of thought went into this. If you look back at the history of the wastewater plant, and, and then, and then fast forward to today, Stan Tech has been working on our wastewater system for, for many, many years. Even before that, Jones and Henry was working on it and, and has a lot of history with the plant as well. But in addition to that, Arcadis did a, did a review of how to handle the solids from the water plant heading to the wastewater plant, and how are we gonna manage that long-term? So of the three firms, for us to, you know, to go through and unanimously vote in, you know, recommend awarding a contract to Jones and Henry kind of says a lot because of how much.
I was surprised.
Yeah.
Personally.
I think we all were, and we all really came to the same conclusion that Jones and Henry was, was the best fit for this project, so it was a good, you know, we've been spending a lot of time with, and you'll see coming up, we'll have an item on the agenda for the Water and Sewer Committee. I was gonna bring that up later on today, about the solids at the wastewater plant, but it just, it just, it just says a lot about the review process and, and it's, you know, getting, getting competition and getting more proposals in, you know, that there's no pre-selected or predetermined contractors or consultants for any of the jobs that, that we do. It's, there's a, there's a, there's a real review process that goes behind all of this, so.
And it's the process we use for any contract over $25,000.
Yep.
Have we figured out how we're gonna pay for this project yet, besides raising the rates? I mean, people can't afford more rates. I mean, I, I just looked at my utility bill this month and had low usage because of the cooler temperatures, and it was still $200.
Obviously, there, we will have to debt this project, and there will be debt service to cover. We're actively pursuing funding through DFA once again. DFA has two branches, if you recall, we've used DFA for, we used it for the EQ Basin, and then we used it for the water plant. With the water plant, it was the WSROA side, with the EQ Basin is WPCLF side, so you have water and sewer components of DFA. The WPCLF, the sewer side, was the EQ Basin, the Williams Pump Station, which we awarded tonight, the Van Heining Pump Station, which we are under contract and designing right now for construction next year, and we're pursuing it for the plant. Generally, on projects 1 to 2 million, we can get very low interest, 1% usually. Anytime we exceed numbers in that neighborhood, like with the water plant, we're usually able to get some, they call it loan forgiveness, it's essentially a grant. In addition to low interest, whereas with the water plant, I was able to get zero. But we'll pursue funding, and obviously, the lower the interest, the less rates would have to be raised, but the project with the wastewater plant, in this case, is something that will affect the entire city. I don't, I can't, I don't have a magic wand to make, so we stop spending money on sewers, but we'll try to get the best financing we can get.
Yeah, and the.
the entire city. I don't, I can't, I don't have a magic wand to make so we stop spending money on sewers, but we'll try to get the best financing we can get.
Yeah, and the, the long-term control plan is, that's, you know, something that we've been working on for over 18 months, probably, but we're hitting about the two-year mark now. And this is a big, we're almost there at the finish line, and this is probably, at least since I've been here, I would, I would call this the biggest item that we've been able to, to accomplish since, since we've been working on it. Because this is, that's $31 million worth of projects that's in the queue right now because of the long-term control plan that we have yet to do. So by way of whittling that down to, to a smaller amount.
Five or six projects.
To five or six projects, down from 20?
Is probably over 30.
Over 30 left? So that in itself, not, not, not only that, but the wastewater plant needs rebuilt. So of those 30 projects, $31 million worth of projects, the wastewater plant still needs to be rebuilt. So we're.
I understand.
We're adding that to the.
They're probably looking at a 10 million-plus project.
Oh, yeah.
And, so, so what's the end result for sewer rates by the time we get done with all this? Four times what it is now? I mean, four times the cost of water? I mean, at what point is the state and Ohio EPA gonna say, you know what, the city of Napoleon's gonna become a ghost town because nobody can afford to treat the water?
I don't have an answer for that.
Yeah.
But the, the best answer, and it's not good, the best answer I have is surrounding communities are quickly going to catch up because they're seeing more forced projects on them. We, we followed the plan that we were ordered to do, and many of them didn't, but.
We were the one, I would, Napoleon's the only one that I know of that actually didn't fight it.
Yeah.
And just went forward with.
I haven't heard of any others that.
But the result is, we have, we have a solid sewer system. Functions very well.
Right.
It's, it, we don't have a lot of, we have a 98% capture rate of sewage, so we don't have a lot of overflows now, this past weekend being the exception, but that's across the, that's really across the entire nation, really, with the monirain that everybody's been getting.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a good answer for you on the rates, but we'll try to get the best financing we can find.
And I don't, Dave, I don't know if you have anything to add, or you wanna add to the, you know, what you're dealing with down at the, at the wastewater plant? Add on top of the, the age of the facility, that there, we're adding about 40% more solids that have to be treated to the wastewater plant. Is that 40%?
Yeah, that's a, that's a ballpark, yeah, 4%.
So, I mean, that's no small amount. It's, it's, actually, might be higher than that.
250 dry ton more, or 300 dry ton more?
300 dry ton more.
And we were at 3.
Like 275.
275, yeah.
So, I mean, we're, we've added a significant amount to the sewer. The, the good news is, to the cost of the operation because of the solids coming from the water plant. I mean, the good news is that the long-term control plan requirements have been negotiated down and are just about, now, these are gonna be rolled into the new NPDS permit, or is it gonna be a separate?
That's what we're trying to have happen, and it's, they're in there now, we're just negotiating those. We, we, we were given a pre-draft NPDS that we reviewed. We sent those comments, or portion of the comments back.
Yep.
And, yeah, they'll be in the final permit whenever that comes. Is that this fall, or August?
Well, the actual, June is the expiration of the current.
June, so it's coming.
We'll have 30-day comment period again on the draft rules that they're proposing.
Maybe we'll get it this fall.
And.
Yeah.
Another.
If anyone says normal, it'll be fall.
The fall, okay. So we'll have the final approval until the fall. Another good news item on that is that the draft permit came out, and the phosphorus limit is, hasn't moved, didn't go down.
No.
So that's a good, that's a good thing, because, you know, dropping, you know, restricting the limits even more, it's more costly. You gotta add more chemicals, you gotta, just more treatment. The best thing I can say to try to answer your question is, when John Courtney did the study two years ago, 2017, he said that city of Napoleon needed to raise the rates 5% each year, and that was based on the old long-term control plan.
Yeah, it is.
Now with the renegotiated long-term control plan, it might be worthwhile for, to have him take a look at that again.
It's easy for him to say when he doesn't live here.
But it's a cost of service study. I mean, it's, you know, he, he said that based on the long-term control plan, not including the, I'm not sure that that even included the, the wastewater plant rehab, so.
And we're already considered a, a red flag area for state of Ohio, as far as.
That's the hardship area.
The hardship community, yes, because we're over the 4%, the MHI with our combined water sewer rates. Which is another reason why we get the low interest we get, but, you know.
Grant would be better.
I strongly believe we will get a portion of the plant grant money. I can't say it till we, we're done with the application, but we have.
They've done it in the past.
We were given 20% on the EQ Basin, we were given 30% on the water plant, I think.
Yeah.
20 or 30 on the water plant. I don't see any reason why we wouldn't see a similar outcome on the wastewater plant. We will apply for it.
I know you will.
That's what I do.
Chad, I have a question also with the engineering and the design that this company's gonna do for us. Looking back at the water treatment plant that was just finished, and I know you had some concerns that if they would've done the design a little bit different, could've saved the city some money and things like that. From what you learned from that, what can you do to make sure?
We've brought on a third party to assist with some QA QC on this project, so I'm much more confident on this one. Plus, we have a little more history with Jones and Henry. We really didn't have much in the case of the water plant.
Okay.
Yeah, but by bringing on a third party for the QA QC, that should help us.
Okay, good.
Man, that's Hoff Consulting, so it's Adam.
Is under contract to assist with that.
Yep.
And if we, you know, going back to what Travis is asking, and those are, you know, very good questions and valid from what I've heard from residents with our water prices now, looking at, you know, like Grace Way, where we're saying, hey, we don't have enough money to do this. If we were to push this back a few years, what, what would happen? What are, what's the negative side of it?
The first component of this with the digesters is we're dealing with months, not years.
Okay.
He can elaborate, we've got a major problem down there.
Yeah.
That we have to address now.
Yeah, the one digester, we talked about this in another committee meeting before that, but the, it needs a rebuild. Is that about, right, the one, it doesn't function, and we've actually been bypassing the digesters and pressing the sludge out and, and hauling it away to landfill at this point. So that also increased our operational costs, that's an item for the next agenda. But the reason is, it's, the digesters are failing, and the, and the amount of solids can't be processed through the normal treatment process that we have. It's just not.
How old are those digesters?
Another problem we're, we're looking at coming is with the regulations being tightened, the coming regulations that everybody knows are on the way, the plant won't be able to meet some of the new thresholds in, with the way it's currently set up. So we're trying to get this rehab in place before we get to that point.
So, so what's the worst case? The state takes it over? Is there, I don't see a downside to that.
Record, it can be worse than that, can't it? I mean, there's. And I think. Can they go criminal on it?
If there's a consent decree.
If you go back, if you get findings and orders, yeah.
Well, if you fight the findings and orders, and it, and it goes to court, and it goes to a federal consent decree, then your order to the city is ordered to do that.
But what if there's nobody left to pay for it? We're already dropping, you know, according census numbers, I mean.
The, the communities. The communities that fought it in the past, that said the same thing, and they wound up with federal consent decrees.
Great time to pass the new levy.
I mean, any other questions, comments for Chad? Thank you, Chad, appreciate it. I have a motion to award the agreement for professional design to Jones and Henry Engineer. So moved.
Second.
Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Travis.
No.
Jeff Al.
Yes.
Yes.
Lori.
Yes.
Okay, that has been awarded.
Something we gotta do, Travis.
No crap.
Moving on to item K four, discussion or action, short-term financing for the new pool.
Kent?
We've got a couple options here that, that I would like to present to you, and I've got kind of my opinion which, which option I would like to, to go with, but we're gonna need probably this fall, we thought maybe around 500, $500,000 to, to do the demolition and the engineering for the, for the new pool. Obviously, we don't start receiving any of the, of the funds from the levy until next March, but didn't really wanna issue the full amount in, in the form of any long-term debt and pay, have money sitting there that we don't need at that point in time. So the one option is to, to issue a short-term note for the amount that's gonna be needed for, for those items, and then to roll that over into a long-term note when the full amount is needed. The other option that, that is kind of, in my opinion, a better option to go, to save a little money as far as, in, in the form of interest, is to do a, an advance from our electric fund, to put that in there in order to cover the cost of that, and then we would have the long-term note and pay that back as soon as we receive that long-term note. It would save us on interest. It requires a petition to the court to, to do that, but I did some checking, and, and that is okay. Our bond counsel did say that he would be able to do an internal manuscript document, which would be required in order to do that, but, for, from an audit standpoint. But, but that is an option to go to save a little bit of interest in lieu of doing a short-term note, and then rolling that over into the long-term note when it's needed.
Do you have an idea what the interest rate would be on the short-term note?
Uh, they were looking, the, a couple of them that they had just recently closed was about 2.8, 2.86%.
Okay.
On the short-term note.
And do you know how much, what the dollar amount would be, the, the savings that, if we use the money out of electric?
Well, it's 500,000, it's 3%, it's 15,000 times 75% for nine months, so 12,500, 10,000, 11,500 in there, someplace we'd save ourselves an interest if we did the other way.
If we're Robin Peter to pay Paul, we should pay that interest to the enterprise fund.
I'm not disagreeing with you.
And that, and that's, and that's a, we, we can do that also.
But they were paying themselves instead of paying.
That way we're, but, but, yeah.
I don't wanna see electric rates go up because we're short-term borrowing on it. Electric rates are high enough already.
Those are the, those are the two options that we can do in, in order to, to provide for that, what we'll be needing this fall.
Okay. And we wouldn't need to make a decision on this right away because of money for the fall? How soon would you need a answer?
We would.
We, pardon me.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I think we would request that council direct the law director to draft legislation for the next council meeting. We have the pool RFQs.
Out advertised right now, so.
And, you know, if it goes three reads and, you know, we gotta award a contract, and then Kent has to certify funds. So to set this up, we, it takes time, so we need to, we need to get this.
I would rather we wait to start the new pool until after we have funds.
If we.
Because either way, it's gonna cost the city money.
You mean, you mean wait until funds come in?
Starting after next March.
Which would be March. So that would delay the project until, till the following year, so we wouldn't build it in 2020, it'd have to be built in, more likely, in 2021, because we wouldn't start designing.
I mean, this wasn't our initiative to start, and when you've got 170 people voting for it, that's not really a mandate to proceed.
The populace voted on it.
Yeah.
They are our bosses, they told us they want this.
I've had more than 170 people that have not gone to vote that told me that they didn't want this, so.
They had an opportunity to vote, an early voting, all the way you can vote.
No, I mean, you can't wait for the funds to be here.
They voted, they voted by staying away from the ballot box.
When is the, the next electric committee meeting?
Next week.
Next week.
My thought would be, we send it to the electric committee so we can get all of the numbers, some of the, a couple of questions I asked, and, and how it's gonna affect the money, like, like what Travis said, it's taking money out of there that may be earning interest now. I wanna make sure that we have all of the information before we even send it, just for legislation to be written. That's my recommendation, send it to electric committee, get all the information, and then send it back to council the following meeting.
I won't vote for anything but waiting until we have money to do it.
I guess the other option would be is if somebody right now would want to make a motion to direct the law director to start the legislation.
Yeah, if not, you can just refer to.
Okay, right. Hearing that, I guess we'll move on.
Okay.
Okay, item, what's one of the, K five, capital reserve fund and pool liner replacement.
That's a, that was, I wanted to make sure we had this discussion. As a part of the finance and budget committee, we talked about the, the pool liner replacement project that city council has been setting aside over the past several years, few years. And let me pull up on the screen the, let me get this, I'm gonna back up. Very last page of this was a, an analysis of where we're at in the capital reserve fund. Right now, we've set aside $100,000 from 2015 to 2018, $25,000 per year. And we have $100,000 set aside right now for the pool, what's earmarked as the pool liner replacement. Part of that, we had Peterman do, and we expended $19,558 for the preliminary engineering of the, the pool. The balance is $80,442. In addition to that, we have not received a number yet from the county board of elections on what the cost of the levy, the ballot issue was. So we're anticipating somewhere between $11,000 and $12,000 invoice to be coming from them.
Why would that come from capital?
No, it's, it's coming from out of that, right?
But that's general fund capital money.
Right, understood, yeah, that's what I was just thinking about. So if, to. So if, to pay for that, you know, we have to, we have to figure out a way to pay for it. And the idea was that it would, it would come out of the, the set-aside fund for this. But in order to do that, there would more than likely need to be legislation to transfer funds out of here and put into the, some other account to be able to pay for this.
In the general fund for, for election expenses.
Right.
So.
And then the remaining amount, which is estimated around $68,000, would be capital funds. And since we're not replacing the pool liner, it'd be my recommendation that either we take that denotation off of it and not have it set aside as a pool liner replacement, since we're not replacing the pool liner, the levy has now replaced that entire pool, or pull that money out and then re-appropriate it into the, out of the, you know, I mean, it's six one, half dozen another. It can be, it can stay in the capital reserve account or it can go back into the unencumbered balance of the capital fund.
Right.
So.
Right now.
Which can be used for, you know, roads and, and anything else capital.
Right now, it's earmarked for, for that specific purpose.
I'd rather go back into the unencumbered.
Which I, that would be my recommendation, be to put it back in.
I mean, if that would had come in from the rec levy and allocated towards that, then I'd say keep it in the rec fund. But with that being general fund, capital, you know, part of that 6238, yeah, I think it'd need to go into the unencumbered.
Didn't we put in 25,000 this year also, 2019?
No.
So we did talk about that.
That was, that was, that was removed.
And when we checked in the, in, in the budget and. Last year when the budget was being put together, we, we had some unusual circumstances. And this, this item was not put into the, the budget to be put in, into this capital reserve balance, so.
So thus far, only 100,000 has, has gone in to this reserve earmarked for that.
I thought, I thought it was.
The printout of the budget that we got for this year, I thought it was in there. 125.
You got a budget book someplace?
You got. When I checked, when I checked the final two, and we both looked at it, I checked the final also and it was, wasn't in 19?
The budget, as we're told before we started the budget process, it's a living, breathing document. So as long as the 25,000 isn't in there, then we just have to find another place that 25,000 to go. Right, and if it is in there, then instead of 100, then it's 125, we still do the math. It ends up going back to the same place, whether it's in there now or it's in there later.
Yep.
Right?
Yep.
So if we, we look for it again, we find it, we put it back. If we look for it and don't find it, it's not there to move. So to me, it's, it's all the same.
I agree.
It might not matter, but we still, if we were under one impression, that's different.
Sure.
See your reason?
If everybody thought it was there, we'd better check and see.
And I agree, but like, like I mentioned, it's, it was just, it was a different circumstance this year than it was in years past, so.
Was it originally in and then cut?
I don't have a good answer for that. I myself thought it was in, but when the final budget passed, it was not.
It was not in.
Right. Yeah, sorry.
That's a question I have, you know, is with the money that's been set aside. I may be wrong in this. My understanding was that the money was already given to the Parks and Rec department and that they were set aside, the 25,000 or was it, is it, it's general? Okay, so I want to make sure that we weren't just taking it from them.
Right. It came from the capital fund.
Just set aside.
It's set aside. And I don't, I don't see it in here.
So I think we should do the.
Oh, I'm sorry, do you mind if I jump back in? When we talked about this, we were, we can do this in a, in a couple of different ways. Pay for the levy, we gotta have a source. So we can handle that probably through the budget adjustment.
Right.
Second quarter budget adjustment, which I believe the meeting is in June.
We can, we can move basically the, the remaining portion of that back to the 400 fund where it was originally out of. We can move that with the, with the budget adjustments for the second quarter. And then we could also move whatever to cover the election expenses to the 100 to pay for that out of there also.
Why wouldn't that come out of Parks and Rec operating?
It could.
It could do that also, yes.
However, however.
I'd rather see it. It's their project.
Yeah, we, I mean, we can.
I just hate spending capital money on, I mean, we're already at disproportionate percentages and I hate taking and splitting that more away from capital. We're already not doing a road this year.
There is an unencumbered balance in the, in the Parks and Rec fund also, so. Could. There's a number of ways of doing it. My suggestion is that we handle it through whichever way that, that we're directed to, to handle it through the second quarter budget adjustments.
Right. I think the biggest thing is, is to get it away from earmarked for the, for the pool setting in the 401 is, is the biggest thing that I think we need to, we need to get that away from there.
Yep.
That's not going to be used for a, for a pool liner anymore at this point.
And I think when we approved the levy, that we did say that was coming out of the money that was earmarked for the pool liner. I remember that, we, we did that.
We did have that discussion, yes.
I don't think that was part of legislation. That might have been with us, but.
I thought we did, that's the way we did it.
I don't think it's in the legislation.
I think you're right, I don't think it's in the legislation. But I think it was discussed and it may have actually been a motion of council to do it that way. I'd have to go back and check the old minutes with Roxanne and check.
I might do that. I wouldn't want that to come out of the general fund.
But at this point in time, there's, there's, there has to be a mechanism to pay that invoice when it comes in. So I just wanted to make sure that, I wanted to make sure this was on the agenda, so we have this discussion and proceed which, which direction. But the, the discussion was that the levy was, was going to be paid for out of that fund. That, that I remember also, but I don't know if there's an official.
I remember coming from out there, but I don't think it was.
I think, I think we agreed to it.
We asked the question and they said yes.
Yeah.
That could be done that way.
I would not be in favor of taking capital improvement funds and using it for operating.
I'll make a motion that we transfer the, the balance of the pool liner fund back into the general fund and pay the levy bill out of that.
Okay. Back into the unencumbered balance of the capital fund?
Correct.
Not the general fund?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll second, that's what I heard.
Misuse of funds.
This is?
Yes, it's not capital, it's operating. You're still gonna have to have additional legislation to take and make it, to make, to transfer it from capital to operating.
We will, we will, we will have to bring that to the table to transfer then from, out of the capital to pay that out of the, if it's out of the general fund or.
As a. Proper use of capital improvement funds.
And I would, I would say that if, if that is the, that's the motion in the second, then we can either handle it through the second quarter budget adjustments or if Billy and Tammy say that it needs separate legislation, then we can do separate legislation.
Especially when there's unencumbered funds in the Parks and Rec fund. You've got the money there, we don't have the money in capital improvements.
My opinion is, if there was not a motion to that effect, and I think you need to check and see if there was.
Yep.
If there was, well then I think we have to do that. If not, I do agree with Travis. But I think we need to check and see if there was a motion to that.
If we withdraw that, we can just table this till next council meeting.
Okay.
There's no, there, there's no rush on, on this portion of that.
Yeah, just that, we, we should be seeing an invoice at some point, but as long as, if we can square this, square up at the next council meeting.
We could still do a motion to put it back to the unencumbered general fund.
That's, yeah, that's true, you can still do that. You can still pull that out just.
I would make a motion to do that, that at least cleans up the books.
Take the remaining.
Do anything with the other thing, it's still gonna require legislation.
The remaining $80,442 and, and take it out of the capital reserve fund and remove the earmark for the pool liner replacement and place it back into the unencumbered balance of the capital fund. That's the motion? Okay.
First, we're gonna have to take ours.
Give us.
Can we amend mine or, because mine's the whole thing except for paying that portion out of there.
You can do that.
No, you gotta. You have to withdraw your motion. You can withdraw your motion and withdraw your second.
I'll withdraw my motion.
And I'll withdraw the second.
Okay. And then Travis, do you have a new motion then to?
Yes.
Remove the earmark of the pool liner replacement from the capital reserve fund and then take the $80,442 and put it in the unencumbered capital balance?
Yes. Couldn't hear the rocks rattling.
I'll second that then, is that a motion?
And you're still gonna check in to?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll get a, we'll get an answer back.
Hey Rox, please call the roll.
Jepsey?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Jeffbound?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Hey, I'm afraid to go on to the next one. Item K6, approval of donations to the K-9 unit.
Thank you council president, we received a number of donations, one from the Elks. I believe this is the state organization of the Elks, $750. Then the local Elks donated 50. And then, in addition to that, we have some barbell punches donated 50. We received $500 from the Henry County Bank and we also received $500 from Rep. Rosebrack. Chief, did you happen to put together a list, an updated list? Because I know we concluded the list at the, in the last council, we talked about it at the last council meeting. But what the updated total is now, is that?
Currently, as of an hour or so ago, we're at 23,630 and 50 cents.
Yep.
23 what chief?
23,630 and 50 cents.
So just a quick update, all good, all good things. The, the position was posted internally, is that closed?
Position was closed, yes, it closed last week, we have three internal applicants. We're gonna be interviewing for sergeant this week and then we'll move forward with interviews on the K-9. So with the extra funds, there's a benefit Friday with Hope Services that they've also said they're gonna donate some funds. In case you get questions, things like that. What's that's allowing us to do is actually expedite some of the other pieces to this puzzle that probably weren't on my horizon until next year, things like that that we can now fund. They just want to party at that initial purchase to get this up and running.
Yeah, the 15 to 20,000 was a, was the seed money to get the, the unit in place.
Correct.
The additional funds are now needed to get some of the ancillary costs.
Some extra gear, things like that.
Yep.
That are important to the unit, it's just, I was trying to get the program up and running to begin with.
Yep.
So that's kind of where we're at. I've already got a purchase order for the outfit and for decal and for travel and training for the officer. So we're sitting pretty healthy in that fund.
Yeah, big, big expenses. Ken, I think you're, you're kind of creating a separate fund to keep this, the donation piece set aside.
I want to keep it separated, being that, that there's been a lot of donations and so forth. So that way, it's much easier if, if any requests are made that, that we can pull that information, so.
The next big purchase is gonna be the dog itself and that's coming up.
Yeah.
I've had conversations with lieutenant from the OSP that runs their academy for their K-9 and that type of thing. That'll be coming up in the next couple of months, but that can go upwards of $10,000 type of thing to get a dog. It depends on what we gotta do and where we gotta get it from. But they're pretty particular with the qualities that they're looking for in their dogs and they're gonna help us pick that out, they go with us.
Yeah.
Hopefully.
In the schedule.
Yeah, they're gonna be the ones that test it, there's a whole testing evaluation piece that I'm gonna learn the process of. But they're going with, hopefully with myself and definitely with our handler and they're gonna be the ones running them through the battery of tests because they know what they're looking for.
The, the word I've heard on the street is that their dogs have been some, subject to some criticism, that the ones at Fort Wayne might be better. Is that anything?
Yeah, I haven't heard anything either way. Fort Wayne's a very reputable company, we've looked at them in training.
You might have. I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
The short version of that is it's gonna cost us $6,000 to $7,000 more to go to Fort Wayne. Or OSP's pretty squared away, I haven't heard of any criticism.
The longer version is there's another outfit out of Lima that's not as.
I've definitely heard that one.
Yeah. The OSP version is a, is a, I wouldn't say newer, but in the grand scheme of things, it's a newer type program that they started. But after talking with, doing some research, chief and I had a conversation with the lieutenant in charge of the K-9 unit, the overall K-9 unit out of Toledo and he, he had good things to say. That, no, they don't, they used, they actually used Lima, did they use Lima?
Wapakoneta.
Wapakoneta, that's what it was, Wapakoneta one. But it's, you know, after, I was, I was sold 100% on the, on the Fort Wayne version. But I, I'm now more sold than ever, especially for the price of going with the OSP training. And that's, chief, I think that's what your, your recommendation is to go with.
That was a recommendation of our internal command staff that did the research on them.
Yeah.
And obviously, my recommendation going forward. As with most K-9 trainers, you know, you belong to some groups to keep the training up and that type of thing. And, and those are things that we can look at going forward. But I know K-9, the sergeants in charge of the K-9 for OSP would help with our training as well. The continuing training that you're gonna have to have for this. And there's a couple of local groups that we've already started talking to as well.
I, I just want to make sure that we get the best dog that we can get because our last experience when we had the dog before, and this wasn't necessarily a reflection on the dog, but the program kind of at the end there left a bad taste in people's mouths. And I just want to make sure that we're not gonna, at least from the dog end. I know with all the guys that we have now, that from an officer's standpoint, there's no question. But I want to make sure we got the best dog.
Your sentiments are exactly mine on that. And I was around for when that program was ending.
Yeah.
And I totally understand what you're. And I totally understand what you're talking about at that point. In conversations with OSP and what Toledo's, you know, supervisors, it's not always the case, but I think your indication that more so, it's more of a handler issue than a dog issue typically. And that's not always the case, but it is something that, that we're gonna have to supervise and learn how to supervise.
I didn't want to say that before, but...
Yes, I understand. It's, but that's, that's reality of the conversations that Joel and I had with the supervisors, and, and it is something that we're gonna have to learn to manage again.
And it's ongoing training, you know, this is a real, this is, you know, field training, things that they do, and if there's, if there's downtime, that they, they gotta commit to, and it's not a, it's not a, it's not a, it's not a pat.
It's not a pat, and it's not a nine-to-five job. It really isn't. And to go a little bit more toward your point, Travis, is that there, I'm gonna be soliciting information from supervisors, or at least a supervisor, to be on the interview panel for these three candidates that have handled dog units before and have a lot more working knowledge than I do.
Cool.
So they know what they're looking for, a handler, what I should be looking for, a handler would be a better way of putting it.
I mean, you watch one episode of Live PD...
Oh, dear.
And you know how good K-9 officers are and their troops. I mean, because this is live in real time. I mean, they're showing big departments out there, and you see how much of a benefit they are.
Yeah, you know, especially now, getting the program up and running, attention to detail is a big priority for me, and making sure this goes off without hitch.
If you're happy, I'm happy.
Yeah.
So we're definitely doing our, our research and our end.
Okay, cool.
Trying to.
Yep.
Anything else on that?
Make a motion we accept these donations.
Second.
Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Gutfeld.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Lori.
Yes.
Council President, if I may. Chief, the schedule of the training, if we go with OSP, the timing, we're looking at maybe having the unit in operation by the end of the year, first of the year?
That would be our goal. It's a, OSP's a ten-week training course. They haven't set the dates yet, but it'd be late August, early September, is their tentative plan for that at this point. So, and then figure ten weeks out from there, and then that's when they'd first be hitting the street, so it'd be the end of the year.
Either between, you know, sometime around December timeframe.
Right.
Potentially, I was hoping, I was hoping by Thanksgiving or that Black Friday, you know, but it...
Well, we get a sale on them?
No, but, you know, I mean, that's kind of, you know, kind of a busy season, and...
It is.
Our Christmas gift to the citizens.
Do they make doggy ballistic vests?
They do.
Yep.
And actually, there's a couple of grant programs out there that I've already started researching that on.
Yep.
Ask our driver, Tony Stewart, that was his big thing.
Oh, okay, great.
That one died.
Thanks, Chief.
Yep, you're welcome.
Okay, moving on to item K seven, approval of donations from the Napoleon Pool Levy Committee.
Pardon me, I'll pull it up. Got a donation for a hundred and eighty-four dollars and sixteen cents from the Pool Levy Committee, and I did not, I believe, Kent, this came into Chris's off, Chris's office.
It must've, I don't know if it came in...
Yeah, I...
Today or not, it was, it was, I know it was...
It was in the bag.
I didn't, I didn't find out who wrote it, what they wanted it to go towards, it just says donation, so if that's the case, then it could be used for whichever expenses...
Pay for the ballot.
And that, that, that could be a, a source of funding for the, for the ballot payment. And that's, that's all I have, so. As of, so as of right now, Kent, what we'll do, and if council can accept this, then we'll, we'll proceed as if we're going to use this towards the paydown of the invoice from, for the ballot, unless something changes.
Yep. Could I have a motion to accept this donation?
From who?
Second. Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Gutfeld.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Lori.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item K seven, approval of donations from the Napoleon Pool Levy Committee.
Pardon me, I'll pull it up. Got a donation for a hundred and eighty-four dollars and sixteen cents from the Pool Levy Committee, and I did not, I believe, Kent, this came into Chris's off, Chris's office.
It must've, I don't know if it came in...
Yeah, I...
Today or not, it was, it was, I know it was...
It was in the bag.
I didn't, I didn't find out who wrote it, what they wanted it to go towards, it just says donation, so if that's the case, then it could be used for whichever expenses...
Pay for the ballot.
And that, that, that could be a, a source of funding for the, for the ballot payment. And that's, that's all I have, so. As of, so as of right now, Kent, what we'll do, and if council can accept this, then we'll, we'll proceed as if we're going to use this towards the paydown of the invoice from, for the ballot, unless something changes.
Yep. Could I have a motion to accept this donation?
From who? Second.
Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Gutfeld.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Lori.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to, we're on the table, Good as a City. Joel, you want to start? You want me to start?
Yeah.
Sure, why not? Okay, all right, so, this weekend was a, was a pretty busy weekend for people in utilities. We had three point three-nine inches of rain. Is that accurate, Dave?
Yes.
We had several calls for water in the basement and, you know, high water, and we had several outages. Six outages on Saturday, and then two more came in on Sunday that weren't reported from Saturday night. A couple, we had one, one lightning strike at least, so it was, it was a pretty busy, pretty busy night. We also had activity in the CSOs and SSOs, so, but such is typical with that amount of rainfall in such short amount of time.
What is this, CSO and SSO?
Oh, combined sewer overflow and sanitary sewer overflow.
Thank you.
Those are the, that's part of the long-term control plan. They want us to close them all down, and we're, we're allowed to have them, but it's part of our managing in the, in the NPDS permit, so, rather than get into the details, which I don't think anybody has the time for.
And you don't want to know.
[laughing]
You really don't want to know.
For Haley and the annual resurfacing projects, right now we have a pre-construction meeting scheduled for June, and I believe in the, in the contract, we gave them until October to complete the annual resurfacing projects. I know that some people have been getting comments about when Haley Street is going to happen. We won't have a more detailed schedule until, until we have the pre-construction meeting in June. Chad, is there anything else to add?
June twenty-fourth, pre-con.
June twenty-fourth. That's a Monday. To get back to everybody on the conversation about the deer population, on June twenty-first, it's Friday, we've got a, a call scheduled with, or actually, a meeting scheduled with somebody from ODNR to kind of walk us through the process of going through deer population management, just put it that way. The committee chairman of the IT Committee, Councilman Hayes and I discussed having an IT update to full council rather than have a committee meeting on this. I was planning on having this happen on June seventeenth at the next council meeting, if that's okay? So we'll, we can, we can add that to the agenda. I mentioned the long-term control plan, where we got a letter today, Mayor got, you got, you opened the letter today, we got approval that the long-term control plan, Chad, I don't know if you saw the letter yet, but we got a, the preliminary thumbs up from the agency saying that our new long-term control plan addendum looks, is, looks, looks good. And, like I said, that's a, that's a significant savings in the long run. The last thing I have is that the Claremont, I shouldn't say the last thing, but the Claremont Avenue project that we're, agreement that we're looking at with the schools, I'd like to add that to the next council agenda under discussion action. And I just wanted to let everybody know that Chief Mack and I will be at the next school board meeting, which is June twenty-sixth at 7:00 PM. We'll be discussing the SRO agreement, the MOU, and we'll also be discussing the Claremont Avenue proposal that's out there, so I want to make sure that's on the agenda for the seventeenth for discussion with council. And last thing I have is a request, two requests to go into executive session, one regarding economic development, the other one regarding matters to be left confidential due to the competitive nature of the utility.
Okay, thank you.
And that's all I have.
That's it?
You left off the last two.
I did.
You know, we used to complain about the executive sessions, but when it's economic development, I don't mind them too much. Ken, what do you have?
I have nothing.
Jeff?
Ditto, nothing.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, Travis.
I've had several complaints about the condition of North Perry Street and Oakwood Avenue, and the passability of, for motorcycles on there. It's pretty treacherous on those roads. Also, there's a, an establishment on Oakwood Avenue that blows the grass out into the street. If they could also, you know, if we could also look into that, not only for sewer, but also for motorcycle safety as well.
Establishment?
I can tell you.
Okay. Yep.
I don't want to publicly shame them.
Nope, that's, that's good.
Has the rental rates for the pool facility been sent to Parks and Rec yet?
They, that, nothing's been solidified yet and approved and sent to full council yet for, for review, or even the Parks and Rec Committee. Councilman Myers, do you have anything?
Nope, still in the discussion. The board is gonna, probably the next meeting...
Any recommendations at the next meeting?
Okay, they have some.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I didn't think there was a rush to that. I think they were more concerned about schedule, and I don't know what else came out of the Parks and Rec Board meeting the last...
That was about it on the pool.
That was about it, just, you know, schedule, timing, RFQs going out, and demolition bids being put together right now for the end of the pool season to start.
I would just like to see a fair and equitable plan for rental of the pool and use of the pool facilities to be discussed.
Yep.
That's all I got, thanks. No executive session for me.
Mr. Mayor?
Joel got an email, a couple emails with the resident about the feral cat situation in the city of Napoleon, so, and I explained that we're exploring the pickup, spay, neuter, return, except who pays for the spay and neutering of cats?
Twenty-two and one, right?
That's what we're...
I don't have an answer, but I have updates.
Okay.
So, first thing is, we checked with the local Humane Society, they don't have a program to address this.
Right.
Okay. Always start local first and work your way out. Then there's a, there's a agency called Humane Ohio, and, and they're the ones that actually have a program, but I think their program only covers inside of Lucas County as of right now, that's what we can tell, but for the most part, that's, it's exactly what you said, it's, they, they can, they have a program where they can have somebody come in, trap them, bring them in, spay and neuter them, and then re-release them exactly at the same place where they, where they trapped them.
Where did you trap them?
That's a, sort of a long-term type solution, doesn't get rid of the short-term issues. Also, Councilman, Council President Bielaruki and I are gonna be going to the APPA National Conference. I was thinking at that time, we can talk to some other communities that deal with issues with feral cats.
Hold on, maybe you can take one of your...
See if they, see if they have any lessons learned or anything like that. And also, since we're OML members and OCMA members, I was gonna check with those two agencies to see if there's any, any additional insight that we can get, but, you know, I remembered this from my previous life.
Okay.
And the best thing that they, that anybody could come up with was spay, neuter, re-release.
Right.
Now, the only thing that we can do ourselves as of right now is ticket people that are, that are feeding feral cats.
And how do you prove that?
You gotta catch them. So, that's, that's, especially, you know, this even goes for people that have indoor-outdoor cats, and, and, you know, they have a pet.
Right.
That they let an indoor-outdoor cat in. It falls under that category.
Yeah.
But, but people that have set food out for, and that's, that's how the problem grows.
I understand.
You keep feeding the animals, they're gonna keep coming back, and they're gonna procreate, and there's gonna be more. And that's, that's the issue, and any experience that I've seen in my career, that's been the number one issue, is that, it's just that people are feeding them, and if they feed them, they keep coming back.
Yep.
And they, the population grows.
On the indoor-outdoor cats, you just need a picture? Because I'm really tired of my bush smelling like cat pee. Chief?
I'm gonna defer to the chief on this one.
What do you want? I'll get it.
Video evidence. I mean, honestly, the section that we have, we have on the books right now, we have ordinances for cows, and that's really the only thing I can think of that we can enforce currently. Kennel specifically, according to our code, any lot or premises which has five or more dogs, cats, or other household pets, or combination thereof, are, are either permanently or temporarily boarded. So, it's, it's the proving of that continuously, and then I would say, you know, always, the more evidence we have, the better off we are, and I think Billy would agree with me on that.
Yeah, I think they have five animals.
But, that's really what we have on, on the books right now to, to deal with something like this. We've had a couple cases over the years, and we've kind of just took the soft approach and, and tried working with them under that, but we do have people feeding animals that's helping this problem. So, that's my first and biggest recommendation, stop feeding them.
Yep. That's the same thing with the deer population, too. A lot of people feed deer, and the deer keep coming back, and then they start growing in the population, and...
Feeding and putting in a garden.
Yeah.
Same thing.
Well, it could go both ways. A lot of people throw corn out, though, and, and different things to attract them in because they like them in their yard.
Right.
Tomato's for my wife, and the deer eat the tomato.
Oh, man.
Iron is...
So...
Okay. There's a big pine on the corner of Duquesne and Jan's Road that could be blocking traffic. Was in church on Sunday morning, and the electric department got an attaboy, somebody who was without power for a little while, but before long, it got turned back on during that, the big storm that we had come through on Saturday, and they're very appreciative that it was on, back on in a hurry. And then next week on Tuesday, there's a Board of Zoning Appeals meeting for the former family video lot. Somebody wants to develop it, they wanna put in a grocery store, it does not fit into the C four zone, but that will be on the Board of Zoning Appeals next week on Tuesday. That's all I have, thank you very much.
Thank you. Just want to mention on Memorial Day, the service that, that the American Legion put on with the help of the police department in town with blocking off some areas, and[1798.32]
Yes.
We, we don't, the question is, do we have any plans right now for the water line in Glenwood?
It's not currently on the list. I wouldn't, we can consider it in our budget.
That would be the next place to do.
I would suggest that we, there's, there's been way too many breaks on that line for us to keep on repairing it. I mean, we've got repair.
Can we do a, yeah, can we?
Since this is my, going to be in, come to my committee, we'll, we'll work with that.
Okay.
Next thing is, we have any idea when the water hole is going to get fixed on East Clinton and Monroe Street? Where the waters, where the water's not green into the.
The bird bath, yeah.
They haven't got a schedule for May yet. They said they're going to pick it up again.
Yep. So, yeah, I drove by, I remembered.
Sure.
I drove by it and saw it again, so I... Oh, Chad, do you have a schedule of that, or do you know when, when we should hear back from them?
They haven't told me when. They have one year.
Okay. Oh, that's right. And they, they have one year, we do an inspection, and then we kind of have, we have, you have a checklist to kind of clear them of the one year, so this will be added to that.
Okay.
The one-year fix.
We run the impression it would be in the spring, but technically, they have till fall.
The spring hasn't been kind to contractors either, so. Appreciate that.
Another thing is, and this is going to come back to my committee, is we probably ought to increase the baggage for residents, because if you notice the last couple weeks, there's been a lot of, two and three bags out at residents. I seen that last week going down Washington Street.
Adding a bag?
Yes.
Allowable for each resident?
Yeah.
Okay.
Since the recycling program is, is down, a lot of people have asked me.
Yeah, it's.
Why aren't we allowed another bag since they're not taking recycling?
And that's good timing to do, because remember, we said we were going to do an evaluation.
Sure.
Where does that, you know, tonnages that we have to dispose of, we anticipated going up, and number, amount of recycling was going to go down. I believe our estimates were pretty, actually, you know, fairly accurate on that. Now, if we add bags, that would, that would cause, you know, the revenues from bag tags to go down to run the, run the operation. And definitely worth a discussion, especially with where our balance is on the sanitation fund. So, do you want that?
Yeah, bring it back to committee, we can look at that.
Can we bring it back in, in July?
Sure.
Because I'm going to have to call in on Monday for the committee meetings.
Sure.
And I'd, I'd rather be here for that. And I was, if I could take a mulligan, too, can we add the, I have the spring cleanup summary. If you want to do that in, next week, we can, or if you want to wait till July for that, too, we can do it then also. If you want to keep all the refuse items on one agenda, or if you want to.
Yes, we'll do it in July.
Okay. The spring cleanup?
Yes.
That way, it'll give everybody a chance to review it. And Chad, I don't know if you had a chance to review it yet, too, so I just want to make sure we got the most accurate information.
Do we have anything on electric other than?
House Bill 6.
You won't be here.
House Bill 6.
You and you won't be here.
Yeah. You're pretty well-versed in what's going on with House Bill 6, unless you want to keep the meeting, or we can proceed however you want.
Thought you'd look at the dollars.
Yeah, we need to, we need to do that.
The dollars.
Part of the pool.
Dollars for the, short-term financing.
Does it may come out of the.
Did you send that to committee?
Did, yep.
It'll be a short discussion. If we've got that, then that's fine, we can meet.
Okay.
I have nothing else.
Good.
I don't have anything.
Kent?
I do apologize, but I do have something, and something that came across my desk today. I spent some time trying to research if there's any other way around it, because I hate doing this, but the state fiscal year-end is June 30th, and we have a grant out there, the J-Rig grant, that we need to get to match to what our, to what the state numbers, to what our books have. And, and going back and looking, it looked as if during the budget process, the, the full amount was not put in there for the expenditure side of things. So, I would like to, the money is already in there, we've already received the grant money, so the money's in, money's out type thing, but we need to have that to match with the state during their fiscal year-end, so that when we submit those files at the end of June, we can do that. So, what I would like to request is that, that we draft legislation to do a budget adjustment for, it's $5,753 for approval at the next meeting. I would like, obviously, we try to get that so that we can do it for the June 30th.
Suspension.
So, so we'd like it to have, I'd like it to have under suspension. Again, I apologize for that. I, we came across that, and it came across my desk today, and I tried to look at different ways to, that we could go about doing that, but we really need to have that to match up. And the only way to do that is to do a special budget adjustment, so, outside of the, the normal quarterly. So, if that's all right, I have a request that, that we direct the law director to, to do the legislation.
Okay. Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Did you get all that? I don't need it. Rox, please call the roll.
Jupsi?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Juppa?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
No need to apologize. We actually should probably have some more for the law director since he's not here today, and surprising when he comes back. You have anything else?
No, I don't like surprising, I don't like surprises, so, but that was something that popped up, and, and we're kind of tied with their, with their year-end coming at the end of this month.
Okay.
Tammy, you have anything for us? Do you have anything for us, Tammy, from Bailey?
No.
Oh, geez.
All right.
That's good.
Okay. I have a motion to go into executive session for economic development.
So.
Give both of Laurie and John.
Okay, Rox, please call the roll.
Jupsi?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Juppa?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Okay. And can we have a motion to go into executive session for, I didn't write down what you said?
Matters to be left confidential due to the competitive nature of the utility.
That's what you just said, I heard you. So moved.
Second.
Rox, please call the roll.
Jupsi?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Juppa?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Was that a second, Ken?
Yes.
Rox, please call the roll.
Jupsi?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Juppa?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Okay. And can we have a motion to come out of the executive session for?
Matters to be left confidential due to the competitive nature of the utility.
Nice, like that.
So moved.
Second.
Rox, please call the roll.
Jupsi?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Juppa?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Okay, no action taken on either, either of those. Before we move on, we can review the...
I mean, what I'm seeing here is that it says, Kelly Sonnenberg stated that blah, 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 and it says if council approves, but, and then it has a statement from the mayor, and while I greatly respect the mayor, neither one of those two can commit, or the Parks and Rec Board can commit funds. It would have to be in that resolution number 066-18. If that was in there.
This is two pages. I'm assuming it passed, right?
Well, it passed, but again, it depends if that's in the... There can be a lot said in, in discussion that if it doesn't make the legislation... I mean, if it says it, then fine. I mean...
You looking at the first page also?
Yeah. Yeah, but who is saying that? I mean, it looks like it says that Kelly Sonnenberg, it goes into a discussion about her, you know, saying it. It doesn't say who says that. And again, anybody can say anything, but...
Who says what?
It's right here. Because it starts out with Joel saying stuff, and then it goes into Kelly Sonnenberg.
I think, I think he's just pointed out that Kelly's been doing it for three years. I don't think that's what Kelly's.
Yeah, Joel was, that was Joel saying that.
It's all Joel's.
Missouri.
Right, yeah.
Okay, but again.
It is being driven.
You can't prove that way. Oh, yeah, you can.
Kelly started three years ago.
But again, the city manager can't commit those funds. It's got to be in that piece of legislation, or we have to create legislation to do that.
Right. That's what I think we, if it's not in there, I think that's something that.
I, I mean.
If council approves.
I still think it should be in charge of the appropriate area.
Well, I think what we talked about is that money that was put aside for the pool renovation or something, we were taking out of there, because that's what that money was set aside for, is to fix that pool.
Then if it didn't pass, then they just had that amount of money less.
Right.
The election money.
To fix the line.
But I, I agree, I wasn't clear that, and that's.
I mean, some piece of legislation would have to have been passed, or would have to be passed, in order to move that from capital funds to that. And, correct, I mean, that's a huge discussion we have every year at Budget Time about that split. And I guess my, my feeling is, is if Parks and Rec has that money unencumbered in their operating budget, why shouldn't they pay it instead of general fund? I mean, general fund is always short, you know?
I think you're forgetting that I'm the, probably the only one that agreed with you.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not.
And I agree with you now, because that was sort of my hang-up, was the whole election part of it.
I just, I'm looking your way, but I'm not, like, pointing at you.
And this is on the third right, on the third read. I'm sure there were some other discussions earlier on, because we had, how many public meetings were we talked about this?
Specifically about paying for the electric. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, well, where are we coming from?
It just says for the benefit of the City of Napoleon.
Yeah, it doesn't specify where it would come from.
Additional funds from Parks and Rec.
You talking about pool committees?
No.
This resolution here, where we passed it.
Yeah, I'm going all the way back to, I mean, we had probably over 10 public meetings this time.
All right, well, we're not going to resolve it tonight anyway.
No, I'm, I'm just saying that people can talk about anything they want, but until...
According to this, there was no motion passed or, or legislation passed that.
Something would have to be.
Uses the pool reserve fund for the levy. It was just discussed as a concept. It still needs, still needs council approval. That's something that has to be reconciled.
Correct.
Whether it's coming from this fund, or whether it's coming from Parks and Rec operating reserve fund.
I mean, if we wanted to totally keep this money inside of Parks and Rec, I would rather have that money go towards the demolition, because that's a proper capital fund use, and then have them pay for the ballot out of operating. I mean.
So you're kind of shelving, but it's a zero.
But it keeps it everything in, yes, but it keeps everything in the, in the proper buckets.
Well, the pool levy still pays for the demolition, though.
Yeah.
So you can. Well, but we're going to need to give ourselves short-term, I mean, that's, that much less we'd have to do on financing.
Yep.
I mean, if we're going to rob the electric fund.
Well, I wouldn't, I mean, I wouldn't categorize it as robbing either.
No, but, I mean.
It's a, it's a short-term borrowing that, that's actually going to save us money one way or another.
But when it comes out that you had to go to court to ask, to take money out of electrical fund to take in.
To save people money.
With the pool in, the average Joe citizen out there is going to say, well, that's why my electric rates are so high. I mean, they're not going to know.
But, yeah, but we're doing it for the right reasons, that's, that's the whole thing.
People aren't going to, people aren't going to understand that.
But it's still the right thing to do.
Right.
You know, I mean, if you're trying to save money.
But that would be 60-some thousand less than you would have to.
All right, let's move on. Item M, approved payments of bills and approved financial reports. In the absence of any objections or corrections, the payment of bills and financial reports shall stand approved. Stand approved. Have a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Rox, please call the roll.
Jupsi?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Juppa?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.